Member Elver, absent. Member Streusnik Dean.
Here.
Chairperson Lantis.
Here.
Member Kane is absent. Vice Chairperson Alonika.
Yep.
Member Crowley.
Here.
And Member Mains.
Here.
At this time, I would like to ask the Planning Commission members to make any declaration of any conflict of interest or of any ex parte or outside communication that might influence their ability to hear all sides on any item on the agenda so that they might come to a fair decision. Okay, I'm going to put in the minutes that I am here today to represent the developer of the Coves. I will have, I have no financial interest in the Coves, nor will I receive any financial interest when they sell their lots to the builder. I might, however, have a financial benefit when the builder builds the houses and sells them. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay here today. At a regular meeting, I will be in the audience and will recuse myself from the room before any votes taken. So that's, anything else? Anybody have any questions on that? If not, moving right along. Commissioner comments? We always have a, oh, discuss changes to, needed to the April 28th, 2022 study session minutes or to the May 11th, 2022 meeting minutes. Anybody have any? Seeing or hearing none, we'll move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Mains, do you have anything you'd like to bring up today that's not on the agenda?
I do not.
Vice Chairperson Alonika?
None at this time.
Member Crowley?
No, sir.
Member Streusnik Dean?
The only thing I'd bring up is, as we look at projects, I, I spend a lot of time on foot, walking, and I have noticed on Seventh Street, which I travel a lot because I get to the trail, I have noticed a couple of people in wheelchairs who've had to go in the street in places because there's just no sidewalk accessible. And I think about how dangerous that is. So I, just, you know, thinking forward, how can we continue to improve that accessibility, especially as we're looking at new projects and improving past projects?
Okay. And that's a good comment. I think one of, the Public Works Director, of course, would want to, need to be in on that discussion. And my understanding is we have an accessibility panel, and so I think those would be, that'd be a good comment for both of them to hear from us. Anything else? If not, we'll move right along. Public hearing, we'll discuss the public hearing on the Evan Woods subdivision at 1001 East Wilson Street.
Hi, everyone. Jennifer Reinhardt here. I have a brief presentation. I will share my screen, and members of the applicant and the development team are also available virtually. They're joining us today. Okay, so the item before you this morning, or this afternoon, is to consider a preliminary plat for Evan Woods, a residential subdivision that is replating lots 1 and 2, block 6 of the Riverside Edition, generally located at 1001 East Wilson. This slide, oops, apologies. This slide indicates the general location. Several other preliminary plat requests in this general vicinity have come before your honorable body recently. And so this is just to the south of East Grand Street, east of Milner, and it is currently zoned R1, and the future land use is low-density residential. And so the plat before you is here on the screen, and it is to, for a residential subdivision with 16 lots. That'll be reserved for a single-family use, that's consistent with the zoning, and then it has one tract reserved for stormwater management. All the lots will be facing an interior street on Harrison. And after a conversation with the developers, they have made it so that there will be parking on both sides of the street, sidewalks on one side of Harrison Street, as well as Grant Street, as the proposed improvements. And the public parkland dedication will be at the time of final plating, that's indicated on the plat. Otherwise, and the lots will not be, will not have access to the exterior streets, so they will only have access to Harrison Street. And otherwise, the, this has been reviewed by the Design Review Committee. There are a couple comments to be addressed in the stormwater management plan. There's some edits to be made and resubmitted, but staff is confident that can be addressed prior to the regular meeting and has been communicated with the applicant. Otherwise, the proposal substantially complies with the subdivision regulations and the zoning regulations, with the exception of the corner lot sizes. And so they are requesting an administrative variance to allow for the corner lots in lots 1, 9, and 16 to be 66 feet instead of the 70-foot requirement. Staff is fine with this and does recommend approval at the regular meeting following the resubmital of the stormwater management plan with the edits from the city engineer. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have. And then, again, we have representatives from the development team who are also able to answer questions.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant or for staff?
I just have a comment, if that's all right.
Sure.
My only comment is that we are within easy-walking distance of the elementary school, and so I'm, I'm wondering if it might be more appropriate to have sidewalks on both sides of that street, since it's quite likely that that, any kids in that area could potentially walk there. And I don't know if that's even, if that's required, but that would be my only comment about this.
I, I could address that quickly through the chair. So the requirements and the ordinance is just for one side of the street and kind of adjacent to the property. But that, that does bring up a point. We were discussing overall street improvements along Grant, and at this time, with conversation with the developers, you know, they're not going to protest the formation of a benefit district, and so it's not addressing the improvements right now, but wouldn't protest it in the future. But I think in, so staff is not recommending both sides of Grant have sidewalks, just based on that conversation and, you know, really holding the developer along the, the part of the street adjacent to their immediate property.
Sub just up, and Mr. Chairman, just a general question. As a follow-up, the, if there is need for sidewalk on both sides, is that something that the city could then follow up and do years later, or what? You know, I, I, it makes sense to me to have side, sidewalks on both sides if you're at a school. It also makes sense to me that, you know, as developers are only held responsible for one side. Beyond this, how do we remedy that going forward?
Mr. Chairman, Jennifer, it's okay, I'm gonna just make a comment. So my understanding, and Jennifer can maybe verify this, I saw this in our subdivision code. Sidewalks are required along one side of the street if it's a local street. So a local street doesn't get a lot of traffic. If it's an arterial or collector, I believe it's required on both sides of the street. Is that your understanding, Jennifer?
Yes.
Yeah. And so, once the street's built, I suppose the city could come back in and do it. It's possible.
Okay.
I, I think it's not likely, to be honest, but, but, I don't know if that helps.
Okay.
So the street, I can't remember the name of the street, but the, the street that's providing access to all the lots, that's the local street, correct, Jennifer?
Right, so that's Harrison Street. And then I think the, the comment along Grant Street is the, the existing street to the north of the property.
I don't know if that helps, but that's.
I would question more, not, not necessarily on Grant, because I know we're not gonna make them do sidewalks on the other side of Grant, but the, the street that they're putting in, which side of the street is the sidewalk's gonna be on there?
Ben, I don't know if you can answer that. I can look at the, the preliminary plat real quick, otherwise.
Yeah, Ken, this has been with MHS. And they're currently designed for the east side of the street.
Thank you.
Me personally, I would think it'd be better on the west side, because that's the side that the school's on, so the kids are always gonna be walking to the west.
Yeah, I think we could, we could accommodate that as new.
And this is a follow-up on that, and I may have missed it as I was looking and not listening. Will there be a sidewalk on Grant Street that connects with this on the development side, or will this sidewalk just end at the end of Harrison Street?
It will connect.
I'm sorry?
It will connect along both Grant Street and the existing sidewalk on Wilson, where it will, there'll be ADA ramps where it will break or connect with the existing sidewalk, and then there'll be new along Grant.
It will be new along Grant, okay.
Current.
Any other questions? Or comments, or concerns? Okay, hearing none. We have, have we discussed everything we need to discuss on this one? We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a conditional use permit to allow to, and thanks to the developer for being here today to answer the questions. Number two would be a conditional use permit to allow a two-family dwelling in an R1 residential district generally located at 809 South Willow Street.
Mr. Chairman, Logan Strasburger prepared this report. She is not able to be here today to present it and not able to be available by remote. So I'm gonna present this to you. This is a, an application by Wyatt Van Deventer for a conditional use to construct a duplex on a vacant lot at 809 South Willow Street. In the next slide, please. Oh, I have, I have control of that, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, so in the zoning regulations, this property's zoned R1, resident, single-family residential, but the zoning regulations provide for the possibility of issuing a conditional use permit for a two-family dwelling or duplex. The city has done this a few times within the past couple of years. I think at least one conditional use permit was approved for a duplex in 2021. We advertised a public hearing, we sent out notices, I think we got some questions. I'm not aware of any objections we received to this. So the, the property is .33 acres, third of an acre, and this has been, this is a property that's been vacant for a long time. And utilities are there to serve the site. That's important. This is an infill site, so it's, it's nice that the utilities are already there. Someone's building where the infrastructure's already in place. There's the density map, the location. That's a photo of the, of the proposed duplex. As you can see, it's a very, very attractive duplex, has porches on the front. The site plan, you can see on the right, the land is, it's about 14,000 square feet, so the site's large enough to accommodate the duplex and comply with all setback requirements. It meets the off-street parking requirements for a duplex. So we, the findings are all in the report. I prefer not to go through every finding unless you have, unless you'd like me to. I'd say just overall, what's important about this, I think, is that the way this is designed, it's compatible with what's around it. Again, it meets the, the setback requirements, the off-street parking requirements, it's of an attractive design. The other thing that I want to mention is, for a duplex in the R1 district, there's a requirement that you calculate the density of the block that it sits on and the, the facing block, the half of the facing block. And it has to meet a certain density standard, and the density in this case far meets that standard. I think the, you have to have at least 7,000 square feet of land for each unit, and it's estimated that there's about 12,000 square feet for each unit for those blocks. So it's, it's, it meets that standard. And it's consistent with the comprehensive plan in terms of promoting infill development and providing for a range of housing types in the community. If you look in the staff report, you'll see that there's not only a site plan, but there's also building elevations, showing the, you know, the facade and all sides of the building, and there's a floor plan, so you can see what, how it's designed. It's a very nice, nice duplex. And so, that being said, staff is recommending approval, and I'll be happy to take any questions you have. Thank you.
Questions or comments for staff?
I just appreciate that the design is one that will just blend right into that neighborhood.
I think this is what the third or fourth one this builder's brought forward to us, and we've approved three and one, and they're through some negotiations. He decided not to build, so I don't, do you have anything?
Looks good.
Yep.
He does a good job.
Well, if there are no questions or concerns on that one, we'll move along to number three. The Coves at Tallgrass vacation of setbacks for lots 13 to 20, 23, 27, and other lots or tracks on the final plat Phase 1, and to vacate a pedestrian easement on lots 26 through 30, and other lots or tracks in the final plat Phase 1, generally located on Blue Stem Drive and Elderberry Lane, southeast of North Davis Avenue and East Wilson.
Okay, so I'll make the presentation for this one. This is an application by Coles at Tallgrass LLC to vacate the setback lines on the plat for the lots under which the applicant has some control, the city, or has control ownership, basically, and the city has a few lots that are included in that. City has consented to being a party to this application for those lots. So plats do typically have setback lines in, in Ottawa, at least the newer plats. This one is unusual in that the setback lines are really quite restrictive. There, there we go. This is the exhibit provided by the applicant. Now, I'm gonna go to the next one. We enhanced that a bit. So the red lines shown on this map show you what the setback lines look like. Those are the existing setbacks. The ones that are shown, that are dashed, those are not part of this application.
So the solid red line is?
Solid red line is what's being proposed. The blue line shown on there is the pedestrian easement that's being proposed for, to be vacated. So there's a, typically sidewalks are located in the street right-of-way. And in this particular case, the pedestrian's easements meander in such a way that they cross the private property, across the lots. The sidewalk has been constructed, so what was important, when we had a pre-application discussion about this, is that there be no gap in the sidewalk. And, and the applicant recognized that, too. And they had proposed that they replace, if the pedestrian easement's vacated, as shown here, and I have another exhibit I can show you, the applicant will repli, will demolish that sidewalk, remove it, and replace it with a new sidewalk in the right-of-way. So our aerial photos aren't entirely up to date, and so what we did with this exhibit is we, we identified where the houses have already been built, and those are shown in a green outline. And then we are also showing where houses are under construction or soon to be under construction, and those are in yellow outline. What's the fenced lot? Does that mean there's a fence all the way around that lot? You know, it goes all the way to the right-of-way? So the, yes, so, so the owner of a lot on the, it's kind of on the west side of that fenced lot, owns that property, and that's, that's part of their yard, basically. And they've just, they fenced it.
If I, if I, they, they bought that lot at the first, at the first sale of lots that the city had, so A, people wouldn't build in their backyard, and B, they wanted a place for their dogs to run, and their dogs run out there every day.
Is that a privacy fence all the way to the right-of-way?
It's a wrought iron.
Oh.
It's a, it's a decorative fence, but it's four feet tall, no, it's not, it's not.
Very similar to the fences that they've put out there in Westwood, right?
Yes.
Black, and, yeah, it looks nice.
So the lots owned by the city are also identified on this, this exhibit. Lots 29 and 30 are owned by the city, and the city owns Track B. Something that was not included in the report, but something I thought would be helpful, is to show you how restrictive these setback lines really are. So without setback lines, the setbacks that are required are based on what is in the zoning regulations, which is 15 on the front, 15 on the rear, five on the side. In some, where there's a garage that projects beyond the facade of the house, the setback would be 20 feet along the front in absence of the setback line. So just to be clear, houses will be subject to setbacks with the line being removed, and it's based on the setbacks for that zoning district. So this particular lot, or these, this group of lots, this is where the setback is probably most restrictive, the deepest. And I, I'm just showing Lot 17 just for, just as an example. The setback line is 70 feet approximately on the west side and 60 feet, five feet on the right. On the rear, the setback is based on the zoning district, which is 15 feet, and the side setback is five feet. So the building envelope, that's a term that not everybody understands, but the building envelope is that part of the site where you can build, put a building. So if you, if you consider the setbacks, the building envelope is, is 35 feet wide and 45 feet deep. And because it's not a perfect rectangular lot, it's gonna, it kind of varies, it's kind of wedge-shaped. So it's a fairly restrictive building envelope. And the applicant could probably elaborate on that a bit, more than I can. So go back to. Sure. So right now, the front setback is 65 and the back is 70? The, the front setback, so the, the setback line is such that along the west side of the lot, Lot 17, the setback is 70 feet. So that's the back line?
That's the front.
That's the front line. So that's what the front setback would be. So the house is, is not allowed to be any closer to the street than that red, than that red line, that setback line. Wow. Yeah. Yeah, it's fairly restrictive. So when this, when this subdivision was designed and put forth, the, the developer had a certain vision for how this was gonna get built. And I wasn't here then, I, I don't think anyone here really understands what that was all about, but, except maybe the applicant, who can speak on that. But what happened was, that was before 2008, and, you know, we had the economic issues in 2008, 2009, 2010. It didn't get built out. And so now, conditions have changed, that, the person that had envisioned this development to be like this is no longer around, and, and so we're all kind of stuck with these restrictive setback lines. So it's pretty unusual that you'd have a setback like that. I'm gonna go to the next slide.
One way to get green space.
Yeah.
My goodness.
Well, I think what's interesting is the private open, usable private open space usually is your rear yard more than your front yard, and this kind of flips that. So it leaves you with the front yard as your open space. Okay, so here's another lot that I think is pretty difficult to build on, because it's triangular shaped like this. So in this case, this is Lot 47, so this is at kind of the west end of the subdivision, just as you're entering the subdivision from Davis on the left. So on this one, the setback line isn't that far back, but it is farther than, you know, what would be allowed by the zoning code. It's 30 feet on the west slot line and 35 feet on the east slot line. And if you look at what that means for a building envelope, it leaves you with a triangular building envelope that is about 15 feet at the rear, 57 feet at the front, and 80 feet front to back. So most homes aren't, don't have a triangular footprint, so it'd be pretty hard to maximize use of that building envelope for the house. So you can see how this, this particular lot is, it's pretty restrictive. Okay, so now on the, to the pedestrian easements. So this is just a photo, just showing you that meandering pedestrian easement and sidewalk on the right. That's an existing sidewalk, and that's just one view. There were quite a few views in your, in your report. We were able to use the fire department's drone to take photos, which is just awesome. Very good photos. Okay, so this is a view from, if you're, picture you're in the drone or a small airplane or helicopter, and you are kind of at the east end of the site looking down, that's the pedestrian easement that is requested to be vacated. I'm gonna go back to the map, just, I'm gonna jump back to that map, I think that'll help.
Looks like they have a similar situation. Off that other picture, there's, it really affects two areas.
It, it does, but if you'll notice, the area where the, where the roads, the confluence of the roads, or the, where the roads intersect, we're not too worried about that one, because that.
Those lots are deep enough.
Those lots aren't usable anyway, so we just wanted to leave that one where it was.
Okay, so that blue line shows you that pedestrian easement that is, would be vacated if this is approved. So that's a view of it right there. Okay, so.
So is that a drainage flue that it also ties into there? Is that what that was? Right, what's that?
Looks like a sidewalk. That's actually a sidewalk.
It's a sidewalk that goes back in along a, a, a.
To what?
Wetlands.
To the cows?
A ditch.
To the cows?
Goes to the cow, yeah. Well, it goes back to the university property.
So that, there's a drainage ditch that is parallel with that sidewalk, just on, on the west side, excuse me, yeah, the west side of the sidewalk. And those are detention areas back there for, for stormwater. There is potential for there to be a path that goes back around those detention ponds that would connect to land that is to the south, generally located on the north side of 68, K68. There's a bunch of land over there that could be developed and could, this could connect as a.
Link it later.
Yeah, so I think that, you know, it could be pretty valuable to the public in the future. Right now, it just is a sidewalk that just ends right there.
So this says, okay, I got it.
So, okay, so just to be clear, this shows you where that pedestrian easement is, the existing sidewalk. The owner's builder will replace the existing sidewalk with a new sidewalk in the street right-of-way. So staff is recommending approval of the requested vacations, subject to these conditions. And I'm gonna read these conditions. They're very, they're very specific and they're very important. So the first condition is, for all lots affected by the vacation, any parking stalls or driveways shall have a length of 20 feet or more behind the sidewalk to prevent cars and trucks from blocking the public sidewalk. So that's not something that's in the zoning code now, it's really more of a practical thing, but it's also helps to prevent people when they're parking in front of their homes to, from blocking the sidewalk. And, and the applicant has agreed to that restriction, that condition. Second condition, the owner of lots 27 and 28 show complete installation of the sidewalk in the right-of-way, abutting lots 27 and 28. show complete installation of the sidewalk in the right of way, abutting lots 26 through 31 and Track B prior to receiving certificates of occupancy for the homes on lots 27 and 28. The owner of lots 27 and 28 shall not remove the existing sidewalk across lots 26 and through 31 and Track B until issued a building permit for construction of homes on lots 27 and 28. So this is, it's a lot to take in. But I don't, let me see if I have the, I don't have those. I'm sure I was already identified very well, let me see. Okay. So this is the best exhibit to look at. So if you can see lots 29 and 30, those are lots that are owned by the city. The applicant owns lots 27 and 28, which are just to the north of that. And what the applicant's proposing to do is, you know, once they, they build the house, they're gonna be, they'll call the city for their final inspections. And at that point, they will have removed the existing sidewalk and replaced it with the sidewalk in the right of way. So.
Across the city's lots also?
Yeah, so really it's, it's, right. So it's, it's pretty extraordinary that the applicant is going to build sidewalks in front of those other lots to make sure they connect. And.
So the current sidewalk, it crosses into private property.
Correct.
But for the developer to build, he now, he or she now has to build a sidewalk on the public.
Yeah, I'm gonna show you this other exhibit.
So the developer will be responsible for pulling up that sidewalk that's currently on?
There is no developers, just builders. Correction.
Okay.
The builder, the builder will take ownership of the lots from the developer and that ordinance will stay in effect. And the builder will move the sidewalks. And when they put the driveways back in for the two new houses, they will put the sidewalk back in.
Okay, gotcha.
The builder would be putting sidewalks in regardless, they just happen to be in place, we need to vacate them to make a lot buildable here.
Kind of another correction, the builder was the developer?
No.
Was it?
No, no, never, never was, ever.
Developer's.
Original development was done by Jayhawk LLC, which was R.D. Johnson and, and John McGrew. The builder was grand builder. They left the community and the lots went back for tax sale. They were sold at tax sale to the Coves of LLC, I'm sorry, Coves of Tallgrass LLC, it's owned by Joe Whalen. And Grand Builders has agreed to come back and buy all of those lots and build houses on them. And through the, through that process, in speaking with Director Hall, he said he wanted the driveways to extend 20 feet past the sidewalk or 20 feet past the lot line, whichever was greater. The builder said, well, the way to take care of that is I'll just take those sidewalks out and replace them in the right of way. And has agreed, and has agreed and actually came up with a language on how to do it, which is he won't tear them out until the building permits are issued and he'll put them back in before he can sell the houses.
So those ones won't have garages?
Yes, they'll all have garages.
Well, there's gonna be a driveway to the garage anyway then, so I don't understand that, that point.
He, he wanted 20.
So then you're talking about a setback then, more of a setback then, because the driveway's gonna go to the garage.
More than 15 feet, yes, yeah, yeah. He would like, he, he would, what the director told us is that he would like, even though there are lots of already built properties out there that don't have a 20-foot driveway, he would like for the future houses to all have a 20-foot driveway. So a car parked on the driveway will not impede the sidewalk, which I guess is against city ordinance to impede the sidewalk, so. And the, and the builder has agreed to that, he just would like to have the ability to move the sidewalks back into the right of way where the rest of the sidewalks are.
And, and if I might add, so the only place that's really gonna make a difference is probably along here, because the sidewalk out here is in the right of way anyway.
Yes.
So, yeah, so it was just, and the applicant's agreeing to do that.
Yeah.
And I think it's a reasonable request.
I do too.
And it prevents a problem.
Makes a buildable lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a sensible solution and I've seen in another community where they added the sidewalks after the fact and it created a situation where they didn't have enough, enough driveway to park toward the house or on the other side without blocking the walk. And that's not ideal.
Accessibility, right?
Yeah. So with that, you know, there's the recommendation and be happy to answer any more questions.
Questions or concerns?
Yes, I'm still a little confused on the, on the driveway distance compared to the, what do we change in the front setbacks to? What do they want to change the setbacks to?
So the setback will revert to what the zoning code requires, which is 15 feet from the front property line. Setbacks are always measured from the front property line, the front lot line. Unless it's a garage, then the setback is 20 feet. So if, the problem is, is that setback is measured from the property line or the lot line. And if you look at these lots here, this setback line's being vacated. So the, the setback that would revert to would be 20, 15 to 20 feet behind this line. Well, as you can see, the sidewalk, this sidewalk is probably more than 20 feet here, but it's probably in the range of 10 to 20 feet in this area.
But on that one, we're not asking to have that vacated because of the irregular shape of those lots.
Yeah.
It makes sense to go 20 feet behind the sidewalk to, for those houses. Where we are asking to have it done is in lots.
On two of them?
Well, it, it only affects two lots that are owned, but it affects four lots and the Track B. The length of the sidewalk goes across the two lots that are owned by Coves of Tallgrass, two lots that are owned by the city and Track B, which is a drainage green space that's owned by the city. And the builder has agreed that if he's allowed to take that sidewalk out, he will replace it all from the first lot on the west side of the green space to where it crosses the lot line, goes into private property on Lot 26. He's agreed to replace all of that.
So the concern, if, if the applicant comes to the city and says, I wanna vacate this pedestrian easement and remove that sidewalk. Well, now you have this pedestrian sidewalk that goes to nowhere, it stubs at this lot line. So how do you make sure it connects to the new sidewalk? Well, the best solution is to have a direct, as direct route as possible, which means a sidewalk in the right of way in this case. The alternative to that, and I don't wanna make things even more complicated than they are, but the alternative to that would be somehow connecting this to the sidewalk out here in front of these lots. And this is really the best solution, is just to have that sidewalk in the right of way. And as far as, you know, that's staff's position. And, and the, the applicant owner has agreed to install that sidewalk. So they're installing a lot more sidewalk than they probably normally would, honestly. But it is, you know, that's part of this process is going through and, and making sure, making sure that things work well and it's in the public interest. I think I had slides with, with the findings and conclusions on here, maybe I don't.
So the city used to own all this land?
No, tax sale. Well, yes, through tax sale. Private land, private land, development, city owned, now back to private land.
So I thought I had a slide with the findings on it, but I don't see it there, so. If you wanna look at the findings, again, the process and the findings required for vacating setback lines and pedestrian easements and other easements are in the subdivision regulations. And they're also on page 27 of the packet. Due and legal notice has been given. So here's another thing that I think's worth mentioning, so this requires a public hearing and public hearing has been advertised. That was advertised meeting the 20-day minimum requirement. Every owner of property in this subdivision and anyone within 200 feet was mailed a notice, received a notice. Also, in addition to that, at our, at staff's recommendation, the applicant conducted a open house at a location down on Main Street, a very comfortable office down on Main Street. And I don't believe anyone attended the open house.
There was a letter sent, again, a, a second letter sent to every property owner. And they were invited to have come down between the hours of 5:30 and 7:30 in the evening on a weekday and to ask any questions or to express any concerns they had. And with the exception of myself, Director Hall and one of the owners of the lots, no one came.
So really, this went above and beyond
Sure.
the notification requirements. When we, when, when we talked to the applicant initially, it was my concern that people would be confused by this and have a lot of questions. And it's always better if they can get those questions answered before a public meeting. Just because the communication's better if they can speak directly to the applicant. They can still attend the public meeting, but we received no objections. I was actually kind of surprised that people didn't express some concerns, just because not knowing, not understanding what's going on. And, and seeing a notice that says the setback lines are being removed. But we, I, I received a question from the person that owns and who's building houses on the lot, I can't remember what numbers they are, but they're, they're at the, on the south side of the subdivision and that person has no objection.
Me, like 33 and 34.
Yeah, didn't express any objection. So, so next finding, no private rights will be injured or endangered. So the setback line, vacation and pedestrian easements affect only the owners of those lots that the applicant owns and the two lots, or the two lots in Track B that the city owns. And as far as the, you know, the entire subdivision could certainly be affected by the pedestrian easement vacation, but that is being addressed because the sidewalk's being replaced. It's actually more of a direct route for a pedestrian. The public will suffer no loss or inconvenience. Again, you know, the, the zoning regulations require setbacks. The, one of the recommended conditions is that there'd be a setback from the sidewalks, any sidewalks that are not in the right of way. And we're ensuring that there's not gonna be a gap in the sidewalk. And that's done through, you know, the building permit issuance and final inspections and, and certificate of occupancy. So those are the findings.
So the, it's, because it's so hard to read, the lots on the south side, is that part of the change that we're talking about with the setbacks?
Which, which lots?
All the, the red, the line on the south?
This, this probably shows it a little better, so.
The solid red.
It's the solid red line, those are the lines being vacated. If you see a line, it's a dash line.
Yeah, I can't, honestly, I can't even tell the difference between a dash line and a solid line.
It's hard to tell, but, so these, these lots, the applicant has no control over these lots.
But all the others on the south side?
But all these are being vacated.
Okay, this is why I'm still confused. Then why, why are we only talking about requiring more setback on 27 and 28? If, if we're affecting all the lots on the south?
Can I, can I?
Yeah.
I'm still confused about the sidewalk setback. It seems like there'd be issues with all the others also.
Only, only because those came, those come almost, those come almost 20 feet into the, into the lot. The two on 28 and 20, 28 and 29, which 29 we don't control, but 28, it comes almost.
27 and 28.
Yeah, but 27, it doesn't come quite in as far, but in 28, it comes in almost 20 feet past the lot line. So the zoning director said, well, in that case, then I want to make sure that we keep at least 20 feet behind the sidewalk for driveway or apron or whatever you wanna call it. So a car could be parked there and not parked across the sidewalk.
But you're, but you're rebuilding the sidewalk and putting it out in the right of way, right?
Right.
Then what's, then what's gonna be, then I don't understand the issue.
Well, it's, there won't be an issue then, that's the purpose of it, that's what the, that's what the builder said, said, well, we'll just put the sidewalk in the, in the right of way, but we need to get rid of the pedestrian easement that's drawn into the plat.
Then, then your, then your number two doesn't even need to be there.
Well, this is, this is why, I'll explain that. So this sidewalk's gonna remain. So without that requirement that there'd be, there'd be a driveway that's at least 20 feet behind the sidewalk, they could build so close and put a driveway over the sidewalk and you wouldn't, it'd be in conflict. So really, it only affects those lots. That, that requirement that the driveway be 20 feet long behind the sidewalk, it really, because the sidewalk throughout the rest of the subdivision is gonna be in the right of way, the setback's measured from the lot line, it's not measured from the sidewalk typically. So those aren't affect, those other lots aren't affected, it just, really just affects these lots.
I thought the number two said lots 27 and 28.
So lots, condition number two is all about installing the sidewalk, replacing that sidewalk. That's what condition number two's intended to address.
Just connects it.
The setback, the setback requirement is in condition number one. Yeah, I can go to the.
So if, it, it, those lots that are at that confluence of roads, if the builder wanted to, would they also have the option to move the sidewalk to get that 20 feet? Or is that sidewalk going to stay no matter what?
Are you speaking about these here?
Yeah, I mean, would they also have that same option to move the sidewalk?
Because that's a pedestrian easement and that's not being vacated.
For that to be vacated.
Okay.
So to your point though, the builder could come in and ask for those to be vacated if they wanted to kick it out to the right of way.
You could, but we'd have to go through this process.
Sure, absolutely, they can go through that, but so, but it's not being requested at this time.
Right. And I don't think it will, because if you cock the houses to meet the sidewalk requirement, then you'd run into a building envelope issue with the side yard setbacks.
Probably so.
So, yeah, yeah. I have no questions.
Right thing to do out there, clean these up and make them buildable. Yeah.
This seems like the, the most sensible solution for tackling this to make it a usable lot.
What's the city plan on doing 29 and 30? Is there anything there?
I, they're just, they're lots.
I thought they sold them all.
I think they kept them maybe for a green space or a future park, I don't know. I, I have no idea on that, Bill, I didn't, Mr. Crowley, I didn't. I never have heard any discussion on why they chose to keep those, but they did. And I'm, they're a center right next to that Track B, that green space, it may be that they plan on putting a lot in there at some point, I'm, sorry, a playground or something in there at some point in the future.
Did they not try selling those?
They were offered for sale, yes, at one time, I think, yeah. But they did not, in the final offering, that the current owner made the bid on, those were not offered for sale.
Could you find out why they didn't offer them for sale? They ought to be buildable lots, I'm, I'm all about getting them on the tax rolls.
They are buildable lots.
Right.
But there's, I guess, and this is just purely speculation, because nobody's here from that discussion. There's no park anywhere close. The nearest park would be over, what's the street, east of the Country Club where the walking track is, that would be the nearest park to.
Over by those duplexes and all, yeah.
Yeah, or at the school.
Or at school.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, they may have reserved that so they could put a park in in some future, a small neighborhood park in in some future. I, I don't really know, I just, because those were never offered for sale, that was just pure speculation on my part.
To my knowledge, there was not a specific plan for a park, it's just, they were kept in the event that it could be park space in the future, and that's as much as I know about it.
Yeah.
I can, I, I'm not sure, I could find more information than that, but I think. I can, I, I'm not sure I could find more information on that, but I think-
Is there any other lots out there, besides this developer's lots, that are not built yet, that's, that we're gonna have these issues with?
Uh, no, because, uh, Van Knight Homes replatted theirs, and the, uh, owner of lots, uh, thirty-one and thirty-two, uh, said that he's gonna go ahead, that they don't affect him, so. He also owns lots, uh, I'm gonna have to refer to my big map here. He also owns lots of twenty-three, no, 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 I'm on the wrong slide. He also owns lots one and two, but the type of house he's building, it won't affect.
What about the driveway requirement? Was there an issue with the driveways that are?
I'm gonna let the planning director speak to that, because we have contention with him, because those lots-
Well, that's why I'm asking.
Driveways weren't deep enough, when they were-
Yeah, that's why I'm asking that.
Building permits were put in.
Are you asking about the driveway requirement, the condition? Condition number one is-
Do we need, is there any other lots out there that we need to address with this issue? For instance, the first thing I think of is the one that, that, the fence lot. Do we need, is this gonna, are we changing the setback on that lot also, for future?
So, to answer your question, this, the fence lot, I don't think there's a, there's not a sidewalk on that side of the street.
If I can answer that, the setback on Lot Eleven, which is the lot he's referring to, is already twenty feet.
Okay.
It's-
Okay.
Okay, so, that's what I was thinking about, but then, when you, then you bring up one and two, do we need to talk about one and two with the, with the driveway issues there? Or is it too late? Are they already built and?
Can you remind me which ones, lots one and two?
Lots one and two, there is a, there is a small two-bedroom house built on Lot Three.
Is that over here, or?
No, it's, it's up on the north, on Wilson Street.
Right below Track Day.
Right below Track Day.
Okay.
Those two lots are not built on yet, uh, but they're not a part of the application, and they're not part of the ownership, and so, that would have to be, and I think, I don't, I'm not gonna, don't wanna speak for Director Hall, but I, my understanding is that he's talked to the applicant, and the applicant is fine with the way, uh, the setbacks are, and there's been no building permit issued, so they'll deal with the length of the driveway when the building permits are issued.
You're referring to these two lots here, right?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, and, and your client owns those two lots?
No.
No.
No, no. My client owns no lots on, uh, the street from the, where the street comes together north. But my client owns no lots of the intersection north.
Okay, excuse me.
And I don't know why the two lots at the top left are, uh, highlighted, but those lots were our other ownership, and we just recently did a replat on those lots for Van Knight Homes.
The two lots on the left?
Yeah, the two on the upper, upper left.
Says permission.
We needed those to straighten up the lot line between the two lots, and make them both buildable lots, and gave a variance on the corner lot, on the width of the corner lot.
So, there's kind of a, there's a limitation here. We, we really can't, we can't vacate something that the owner hasn't requested be vacated as part of this process.
But they reserve that right, Billy, they can always come back and request it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right?
I understand the reason you're asking the question, but-
Yeah.
Well, we have to do this lot by lot by lot.
Yeah, and, and just, from a practical standpoint, and this comes from a planning, as well as a developer standpoint, we first came in and applied for a variance, just to vary the setbacks. Because it was a recorded easement, that wasn't possible. So, the next step was to do a replat. Since the lots were not contiguous, that was going to require five separate replats, at the cost of thousands of dollars per replat. And then, through looking at the regulations, we found in the vacation section, there was a place where we could vacate the setback, and the application fee for that is two-hundred dollars, I think, so, uh, it made sense to come, go this route, and even with the cost of the sidewalk, this is still a much less expensive route than doing five replats. And, and accomplishes the same thing. Other questions or concern? Excuse me, concerns? Okay, old business? Do we have any old business? New business? No new business. So, the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting will be Wednesday, June eighth, twenty-twenty-two, at seven PM. The next regularly scheduled Planning Commission study session will be Thursday, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two PM. Is there a motion to adjourn?